Good evening. Welcome to the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2025. We'll start the meeting by reading the meeting procedure.
Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting Procedure. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of the agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The Chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at any meeting because... or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first followed by a Board of Adjustment business. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenters' table, state his or her name and address for the record, and explain his or her request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the Chair allows the speaker additional time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes the speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the PCBOA Board. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group of similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the Chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on the agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6 o'clock PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10 PM. No new agenda items will be considered after 9:45 PM. The PCBOA may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date time, preferably immediately following Tuesday at 6 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting. The PCBOA, through the Chair, may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item.
Okay, we'll start with the Planning Commission and the approval of minutes from the February 24th, 2025 meeting. Does anyone have any comments?
This is Timothy. I'll move to approve the Planning Commission meetings for the February 24th, 2025 meeting.
This is Larry. I'll second that.
We have a motion by Timothy and a second by Larry to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2025. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Motion carries. With no new or old business, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the Board of Adjustment from the February 24th, 2025 meeting.
This is Veronica. I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
This is Larry. I second that motion.
We have a motion by Veronica, a second by Larry to approve the February 24th, 2025 meeting minutes. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Motion carries and minutes are approved. No old business. We'll move on to new business. Variance application 2-V-25 by Jack of Hearts Inc., lots 16 through 20, Cozy Pine Beach, Section 28, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emma Township on Big Sand Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 16.46.00700. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section 502.2 and 503 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed accessory structure to be located within the 100-foot ordinary high watermark and the 30-foot bluff crest setbacks. The applicants would step forward and state their names and address for the record and then explain what is being requested.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come in here and present our request. My name is Peter J. Hildur. My wife there is Dever Sue Hildur, 23835 Green Leaf Drive, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
Then go ahead and present what you're asking.
Sure. So I've been coming up here since 1965 when I was born. My grandfather and our family have about 200 acres on the other side of the lake, actually on the same bay, but on the opposite side of where our place is. If you look at our history, we try to do the right thing. We look for variance for approval. We do not do what many of the people on this lake and in Hubbard County have done, and they have done the ask forgiveness approach. Give you several examples if we need to get there. The request is really simple. We built a home recently, just completed in July of 2024. Prior to that, we bought about 17 and a half acres. And if you look at the diagram that's up on the board right there, we actually tore down the home that was up to the front. It was actually laying over the bluff. When you look at where the house structure was and the patio, there was zero variance from the required 30-feet setback. In fact, the unfortunate situation with the family who owned all of this property, there was not even a guardrail there, and she actually fell down the hill and had to be airlifted out. It was the beginning of her demise. Lesson learned for all of us that sometimes safety and processes like this are extremely important. When we tore the place down, we actually came to this organization here, the government body, and said, "When we tear it down, can we replace the same structure at the same spot?" And the answer was clearly yes. However, it needs to be in the exact same footprint. It can't be any bigger or larger. It needs to be right where that slab was. Our miscalculation was, and it's on our responsibility, is that we should have understood what the yes-but was. And the yes-but appears to be, and if I've got the regulation and requirements wrong, you have to do that within a certain timeframe. Since then, we built our house. We tore down both the existing house there, where our house was. In front of it was a bunkhouse, and then back behind of it was an actual outhouse. So we took down all of that, did not mess with the grade at all. In fact, we received a letter about two years ago saying that we took down some trees and plants. Instead of just debating that because it was not accurate, we replanted more trees. And we're going to replant more trees as this property continues to go. We have a huge forestry project on the other side. We take care of this land, both to prevent fires but also attract the beauty of it, and we'll do the same with this piece of property. The ask, and in those pictures that you're showing there of particular interest because that shows you how close that house is to the bluff. In fact, that tree is still standing there. We're asking for a 15-foot setback to build a screened-in porch on a slab. Now, there's difference, and Veronica, when you were out there, there's difference of opinions to where the view would or wouldn't change. Quite frankly, it's difficult to see in the winter because there's no foliage there. It's also very difficult to identify when you're sitting in our four-season porch to look out over the beauty of the lake and the land that it offers. There's a view difference. But more importantly, our neighbors, if you're looking at our home from the lake up and you look over to the right there, don't think I really want to be on top of their patio and staring out their window the entire time. And that's why we're asking for the consideration of that variance to be instead of 30 feet back to be 15 feet back. It's a very simple structure. It's a plat that has the proper structure because of the land that's here. It's very sandy, so you have to have a lip on the plat to create a little bit of balance there so as the land shifts, the concrete doesn't crack. There is no running water that's going to be out there. There will be electricity, but it's a very simple design, one, two-season patio that will help us enjoy this beautiful land and property that we've invested a lot of money and time in throughout the years and years, all the way back to 1943 when my grandfather originally bought the property across the lake. Interesting story about that. He bought 100 acres on the lake. It was $45 an acre back then. We own another 80 acres. We call it the back 80, and we've just taken care of it beautifully. There's a little lake, 14-acre lake in the middle. The gentleman that sold the property to him didn't know what they were going to do because back then you didn't have access rights, and he bought it for $8 an acre. And so if you can think about what this beautiful property is worth right now. So the ask is two things. Ask for not forgiveness because we've done something. Ask for forgiveness because we didn't know the rules and we've gone through the right process to get things approved. Again, I can share a lot of history because I've been growing up here all my life on the people that have forgone the right process. One of them is the gentleman right off of Eighth Crow Lake that had 15 different variances. They didn't get approval, and he was given forgiveness for something he did after the fact. And I can give you a lot of examples there, and I hope as you go through this consideration, you award the people that are doing the right thing to protect the beauty of the lake and the property. And the vibrance that we have and we joy up here in the north, it's a very rare, special thing when people come up here. So that's the ask. I think it's relatively simple. We're not looking at putting a massive home there, which we could have. Put a home to match the footprint. This is a very simple, simple structure that our opinion from a view, how it affects our neighbors and how it looks from our home, is extremely important to us.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Board at this time?
This is Veronica. I do have a couple of questions. Does your current new residential structure have any kind of guttering system on that flat roof?
No, it does not. So the reason you won't want those on Prattless or rubber material, it's a membrane that sits out there, and you want the water to drip off. It actually sits at a little angle, and it'll go away from the bluff. One of the things we don't want to do, we've done a lot of studies on, even with our home here today, is deterioration of the bluff. So everything flows away from the bluff. The same reason when we run electricity down the hill there, it will be in a PVC pipe. It will not dig into the ground at all. I'm just talking about in general, the thought process that's gone through this.
Does Veronica speak again? So the new proposed structure that you have is going to be, have a slight angle then that you're considering then so that any type of stormwater already just naturally is going to go off the backside?
The backside, correct. The same thing as our structure of our home right next to it. You have to have that so the melt can flow downward.
That's one question I had at this time.
At this time, I'm going to open for public comment.
You don't say anything.
Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close public comment. When was the home built and when was the existing structures that were there tore down?
So I'm going to generalize only because I don't know the exact dates, but I'll give you a good timeframe. The piece of property was purchased right before COVID. I think probably early 2019 if memory serves me right. We took our time building the home for several reasons. One of them was finances. I didn't want to get a mortgage on the property. And the second one is I still have a professional career. My offices are in Carmel, Indiana. We're actually Florida residents. So it was when we could build the time, create the time, energy and effort to build it. So the home was built over a three-year period.
When did you start the building?
We started the building in probably June or July of 2021. That would include the beginning of the takedown of the old structures, by the way.
So the structures went down in that timeframe and then construction commenced?
Yes, sir.
When I look at this and you keep referring to what was there, while it's true that you could have rebuilt in the exact footprint, it was the exact footprint, no enlargement, no second story, the same thing. So once that building was taken down, there are no longer any rights to that grandfathered-in clause of what was there in the past. So as I look at this as a board member, that's basically immaterial to me on this presentation and what is wanted, is what I'm looking at is you want to be closer to the bluff than the ordinance allows. You want to be closer than the ordinary high watermark allows. But I can't, through my process of trying to find a practical difficulty, I have, I can't find a practical difficulty because there's ample room to place that structure and meet all of the setbacks.
Sir, can I make a comment on that, please?
Certainly.
So although I'm responsible for understanding the regulations, I would argue that when Nick came across and first walked through our property, there was no disclosure that there was a timeframe. I would also make an argument that when you set that back further, it sits closer to my driveway and it completely impairs the view of the two bedrooms that are sitting to the left side. Although they cannot have a view of the lake, the look at the back end of that screened-in porch. It's a very, very simple structure. So although I do believe that I am responsible for not knowing the law and the guidelines, this is not a big ask when you look at what's been done on this lake, what's been done in Hubbard County. And I just think it would be a real shame that you would penalize people that are trying to do the right thing. Because based on what I've been able to do research on, it's apparent that the ask forgiveness approach isn't something that was 10, 15, 20 years ago. It's as recent as 12 months ago, and I have plenty of examples to support that. And you can just look around the lake, and that seems to be the process of habit versus abiding by the law and the governance and the respect for the beauty of the lake. So I just hope that you grant this without penalizing the people that are doing the right thing.
I'll ask you the question you referred to. If you would have known what you know now, what would change?
I would have built that structure, and that would have been my home right there, and I'd have built something in the back, and I would have simplified the overall development of my place.
Okay, thank you.
This is Veronica speaking. I just have a couple other, maybe just some clarification questions. During the lot views, I was, while we were there, I did go with the applicant to look to see what types of, what the view would be and what the view wouldn't be, and the topography and such. So this particular property, Eric, can you please bring up the... There's an elevation page on there that shows where the elevations are and the proposed structures on the map here. It was one of the larger ones. I don't know if it was in the smaller set. This one will do. There's a different one. It's actually enlarged. It's a little bit easier to read.
Veronica, I have a copy in front of me as well.
Yeah, and so do I. I just wanted to bring up so I can show my colleagues here. Anyhow, so as Eric's looking for that, the proposed site currently is at 1465. When I asked the applicant to go back to where the crest, the 30-foot crest of the bluff would be, the elevation starts dropping. So there's, the elevation is there, then it starts dropping towards the back of the property, again with the bluff in the front. It goes about two feet. So in order to move this particular proposal back, it does go down two feet, which then, when you're looking towards, I assume, when we're facing the lake and we're on our right, is that going to be the north?
Yes.
Okay, so the north side of the property continues to increase in topography. So then you don't really have any view as you're sitting back there when you're looking out that way because all you see is his grass and some of the treetops anyhow. And the neighboring property. Moving it back to meet the crest doesn't do a whole lot for visual. Just my opinion. I understand our ordinance. I understand the situation, but I have mixed emotions. I have mixed feelings for it. It can go either way as far as I'm concerned because it does have some topography constraints when you do move it back to, it won't meet the ordinary high watermark setback in that spot. This is the one. In order to meet the 100-foot ordinary high watermark setback, it's the red line. Then you do go down to the 1462 mark, which drops it down, like I said, two more feet down on the one side. Or that's two more feet that you have to bring up to meet the, more fill to bring in, more dirt to bring in. This spot's already level, as I asked the applicant while we were there, if that particular, they were already at the 1465 mark. No groundwork, no dirt work really needed to be done at this particular location.
This is Larry.
Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Nope, I thought you were done.
No other further groundwork is going to need to be done.
There will be no groundwork done, and I think the one thing missing that I can add to your view, Veronica, is we're looking out there with no foliage.
Correct.
And when the foliage comes on, it impairs your northwest view of the lake. And to be real honest with you, it impairs my view of my property across the lake. And there's a strategy we have with the telescope and whatnot to be able to enjoy my other family that lives over there and the property that's owned by us and others.
This is Tim. I have another question. I missed out at the lot view where you mentioned anything about a neighbor.
I'm sorry, about what, sir?
I missed out on you making any mention about any problems, you know, with the neighbor being affected.
Correct. So if you look over to the right, if I move that back, so one of the things I believe, if you look at my home, and there's two things with Charles Stinson Home. There's one directly across the lake that's been criticized for being built, and it's so visible sitting out there. You look at my home from the lake, you can't even tell it's there. If I have to build it back, I'm building that thing up 30 feet, and I can build it up as high as I want once it's back to 30 feet. So I can see the view that I believe I need to build. I've worked with my contractors. I have no choice because I'm going to enjoy, and it's going to stick out, and I don't want it to stick out. The second thing with my neighbors to the right, by moving it back, it sits. And here's the other thing I think the Board needs to understand. There is a huge issue with property lines in this whole lake area. I went back for almost 100 years in spade, spent a lot of money to fix everybody's land for them. When you look at the property lines out there, I'm actually going to deed over because my neighbor's corner of the house is on my property. The other neighbor to the left, their entire driveway is on my property. I'm a good neighbor. I don't want to create any type of chaos when I'm sitting on top of their house. And 15 feet makes a big difference. If you look up at that drawing, and if I can stand up and point to where it's at for you here, this other home is back here where the red line is. If I move that back, I'm sitting, looking right in their patio. And I don't want to do that, and quite frankly, they don't want me to do that. Because it is, this is about, we move up here for a reason. We move up here because the crap that's going on in our world isn't any fun. Move up here because the air is great, the beauty's wonderful, and you get peace and quiet. I don't want to be on somebody else's house.
Other questions or comments from the Board?
Well, myself, this is Tim speaking again. I seen in your proposal that that sidewall was made up of a fireplace. I'm sure that was to screen any neighbor's views in your design. But I'm with Veronica as far as being either way because the topography does slope away from the lake.
It does.
And the runoff issue is not going to be there. Myself, I don't, I don't see it as a huge increase of view, but I don't see it as a huge threat to the lake, myself.
This is Veronica speaking. Tim, I agree with the flat roof design as the applicant has explained. It is not going to be visible from the lake due to the topography, the way the elevation goes up where the residence is, and you're not going to have views of this gazebo from that direction from the neighbors at all on that side. The only neighbor that's going to see it is the one that we've been visiting about, and having it up and out of their ways, out of their line of sight is better than right side-by-side looking in. I think this location seems fitting since it was already the non-conforming residence that was there. The groundwork is already complete. The elevation, it just seems like kind of the proper placement, in my opinion. That bluff does run across the entire length of all the lots in that area. So, I mean, it doesn't have any detrimental impact to the bluff at this time.
What about any violations of the removal of trees? Is there something that's got to be done to bring that into compliance?
Sir, it's already been done. Now, we did have a unique winter when we planted them last winter, so I could replant them, but they're there and dead. So I'll be replanting them. There was four, five, or six of them, I think is what it was, and we've actually planted about six dozen, and we're going to plant more trees to help two things. To help maintain that bluff like it should be, replacing dead trees to continue to maintain that bluff. We moved there and bought that property because of the bluff, and I want it to be preserved. And we also responded very quickly to the letter, and instead of disputing it, because I don't really believe, we took down any trees. It was an aerial view, and aerial views are pretty tough when you talk about small trees. I assure you that the beauty of that property will be greater than what it was when I bought it.
This is Veronica speaking. I just have another comment. If things, if any proposals are made or any motions are made, if I was to make a motion at this time, I would have another condition. Obviously, one condition would be your revegetation plan must be completed to the satisfaction of the Environmental Services Department before your land use permit can be even obtained for this construction. The second one would be that if the structure is ever damaged or replaced, then it would have to meet setback.
That's acceptable. And I'll also tell you something about the property. I told you I was born and raised here originally. I did move. My family's been here. Every piece of plantation is natural to its habitat here. The slate that you see there is Virginia Slate from Virginia, Minnesota. The grass that we've planted and grown is local here. The plantation that's growing there is local. The plantation that's growing there is local here. So we believe in preservation of the environment. We know that things live and act better when they live in their environment. And ma'am, that's not a problem at all to abide by that.
Thank you. Anything else, board?
I don't have any other at this time.
Anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Veronica. I'm prepared for a motion. I make a motion that we approve the application with the following conditions. The approval of the application would be that presented per the site planned, per the elevations listed on your site plan. Condition number one would be revegetation plan must be completed to the satisfaction of the Environmental Services Department before a land use permit can be obtained. And number two, if the structure is ever damaged or replaced, it must meet the 100-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. And then for the findings of facts, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? Yes, there is a bluff that runs the full width of the lot along the shoreline that has 40 foot of rise over 73.5 feet of run for a 54.4% slope. Due to the bluff and the constraints of the topography continuously increasing towards the residence, placement of the accessory structure in the proposed location for a view of the lake is in harmony with the official controls. The proposed location will have very little stormwater runoff towards the lake. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? Yes, the proposed accessory structure, the eating and gathering space with a view of the lake is a reasonable use of the property. Although the proposed location is within the crest of the bluff and the 18.6 feet into the ordinary high watermark setback, it is within the same footprint location of the previous residence that has been removed for the new residence. The land has already been leveled and cleared and should have no, have little to no impact to the bluff. Number three, is the variance, is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? The lot is 116,438.15 square feet in size, per the county GIS tax parcel map, 230 feet wide at the ordinary high watermark, and 364 feet wide at the midpoint lot depth, and 338 feet deep. There is a bluff that runs the full width of the lot along the shoreline. Placing the proposed 23 foot, 7 inch by 36 foot, 1 and 3/4 inch, and 9 foot by .33 height accessory structure within the footprint where the previously non-conforming residential structure existed will have little to no impact on the bluff, and the structure will be well screened and less visible from the lake in this location than at the highest point of the property. And number four, I will adopt staff's findings of number four by placing yes. And number five.
We have a motion by Veronica and a...
This is Larry. I'll second the motion.
And now a second by Larry. We have two conditions. One, that a revegetation plan must be completed and improved by Environmental Services before any land use permits are issued, and that if the structure is damaged or replaced, it must meet all setbacks. The findings of fact were listed by Veronica. Eric, did you get all of those?
The recording did.
Okay. So I'm not, I was not able to capture all of that, so it'll depend on the, that. So a motion and second. Now take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Motion carried. Contacted with the Environmental Services on how to proceed.
Great. Thank you very much. Just clarification on the landscaping. Just, I put the prints in, is that right? So I show the landscaping map and what, because I have a landscaping architecture with the plant, because they can't be done before because I'm working in that area. But that plantation and the vegetation and the trees and everything with the landscaping, I submit a design, is that correct?
Well, have you discussed that with, actually, it's going to have to be implemented, and you can discuss that with Environmental Service Office. In your letter, I'm sure that will be stated for your, in your decision letter, and then you can contact them.
Great. Well, thank you to everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We'll then move on to miscellaneous.
We have that upcoming land use training at the end of April. Ken will be going to represent the board. I've got a couple of staff that will be accompanying him and segueing into communications. It's looking like April will be a healthier agenda. I've got three or four applications so far, and we've got a week till the deadline. So I expect April will be a return to more of the busy time of year. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Nothing else. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Larry. I move to adjourn.
This is Veronica. I second that.
Motion made by Larry, second by Veronica to adjourn. Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.